Last meeting in order, first order of business is a, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from June 21st?
Yep.
Yes.
Are there any changes, corrections?
Last meeting in order, first order of business is, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from June 21st?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are there any changes, corrections? Last meeting in order, first order of business is...
We're gonna do...
...we're moving.
There we go, alright.
I'll make a motion to approve the orders as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Scheduled public hearing tonight, we have no speakers, but case number, continuation of case number AMD 2-21, Zone Text Amendment Proposal to repeal or replace in its entirety the text of Chapter 15.1 Set, North Bend City Code, Historic Preservation.
So, planning commission worked about this last month in June, went over the bulk of it. We ended with a question from planning commission about the definition of owners, and then also the Confederate tribe of the Ku Klux Klan and Sayu Swat people requested more time to provide comments. So, where we're at today is I have a response for you on the question of owners, and we did receive comments finally from the tribe, and we'll, should go over those and talk about those before planning commission makes a recommendation to council. So, when it comes to owners, the definition of owners by state statute of ORS says that all owners within a historic district or multiple property owners, they all need to consent to the formation and designation of that resource to a resource list, or otherwise it does not get designated. We then have an OAR on how to administer, goal five, which is related to historic preservation, and that was revised to give cities flexibility, well not to give them, but as part of the revision, it did give cities flexibility to adopt a multiple owner property or historic district with only a simple majority. And so that's what we had before, that's what's recommended by the state, that language, a simple majority. But, if planning commission wanted to, we can recommend that owners be defined as all property owners, and that would actually be more restrictive than what the state's recommendation is on it, and would be in line with the ORS. And so, we think that you can do that based on that justification that we're just being more restrictive. So, that's what we found in regards to that. Do you guys have any questions?
What would be the basis for the restriction, I mean, what would be some of the benefits, what would be some of the negatives? Be more true.
Yeah.
So, it would be a lot harder to get something on the register if you needed absolutely every owner within that radius to sign up with you, especially when you're...
Correct. At the same time, the ordinance very clearly states that it's involuntary ordinance, and so it would require that everybody volunteer to be part of it, and would not allow just the simple majority to say, well now you're subject to these regulations. Because once you're designated a resource, then your property or resource is subject to our ordinance.
Could you make it a, more than a simple majority, instead of a hundred percent majority?
You could, but what you've got right now is you have the leeway that we have because the statute, which, in spite of the fact that we all operate, the OARs are regulations and the ORS is our statutes, right? So, typically we look at the regulations because they're going to be a lot more specific about our step-by-step, what we're going to do, but the, find the more authoritative authority is the statute. Because right now we have a reg that is getting broader, letting you just do the simple majority but the actual statute says everybody, you can do either one and defend it. If you get creative and try to do something in a gray area, then we don't have a nice black and white written law that we can lean on.
But if a district, if you have, you know, if we keep it the way it is, so a majority says we want this to be a historic district for a neighborhood, but it's still voluntary, so if I own a house in that neighborhood and I don't want my house to be considered historic or subject to the rules of the historic district, it doesn't have to, right?
Well, that's the, that's why the whole absolutely everybody versus the simple majority is an interesting question. I'm not sure if that's been hammered out yet.
Because a district, when I ask the question, that would mean that everybody would be subject to the regulation if the simple majority said yes, even those people who didn't want to be a part of it because the regulation, the ordinance said, we only need a simple majority, now everybody's going to be a part of it and subject to the regulation. And that's why if we want to keep it truly voluntary, then we would want to look at how we do that.
So you'd have to almost do the statute then?
Correct.
So, rather off going with the state's recommendation as opposed to making it more restrictive?
Do you want to make it easier or harder for things to be put on the historic register? Do you believe, possibly you don't want to look at it that way, but that's, I think that's...
That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
And it's important to note that this only applies to the North Bend's local register. What we decide goes on our local register. The state at that level is still going to go through their process when it comes to the national register, and that may be only a simple majority are needed. But if we are looking to adopt a resource, this proposed text, what would regulate that?
So, we could have, we could have one statute, another state could have another on the same piece of property.
If this, if, so let's, you know, if a historical district was adopted at a state, federal, you know, level, then that would be regulated by their set of regulations, and then we would have some regulations based on our code, but just to follow the state's laws. But, if we really want to add the extra level of regulation on, we would have to then adopt it into our own register.
But going back to the purpose for this, wasn't it so the city could get grant funding?
So, the city or properties that volunteer to be on this, part of this program, then have opportunities for grant funding related to historic preservation.
And the city needs to adopt this to be certified local government?
Correct.
Which is a good...
It opens up opportunities for grant funding and could help...
And other stuff.
Yes.
And it sounds cool.
But if it's, if it's just one building, like if it was the theater, that is only the owner, because you're not talking about a whole district.
Correct, so there's, the district has, you know, that's where you get into more than one owner really. So when it's a building or just one piece of property, you're less likely to run into that issue.
Okay.
Okay, so let's then touch on the comments from Koozey. The first main point that they brought up was they would like, so we're, I would start with, we're recommending that this historical landmark commission be made up of five members. And the tribe has requested that one of those seats be reserved to represent the tribes, somebody who has experienced, you know, tribal cultural resources. And so this is not something that's required of the city to do. It certainly could go away in helping improve tribal city relations, possibly, but I think if, planning commission can certainly discuss how they feel about that, what they think, if you're inclined to go that route, the tribe has the same opportunity as everybody else to apply for a seat on the commission, and so they, and would be given preferential preference based on their experience, professional experience and knowledge, so there's that. And so if we wanted to add maybe an ad hoc members, you know, non-voting seat where they are commenting and representing but don't necessarily have a vote, that's another option, way to handle that. Planning commission can certainly discuss. They also asked the question, you know, what are the qualifications for the historic preservation officer? And it is very likely, well I should say, the historic preservation officer is by definition only there to administer the regulations. And so the historic landmark commission, those members themselves will be the ones with the expertise and qualifications. The historic preservation officer will very likely be a staff member, not unlike me, the city planner administering zoning with planning commission. So, there's not a whole lot of job description or qualifications there other than they're going to be the ones there to administer that ordinance. They also asked to amend the proposed definition for historic resource to match the definition in the National Historic Properties Act, I think, or the NHPA, the definition for historic property, and that goes, that brings in all resources on the national register of historic places. And for the CLG program, the city cannot regulate those unless and until they adopt that resource into their own local program. So I think it's important to keep the definitions separate. We have historic resource, it's the same definition as was adopted before, so it meets the state requirements. And I think the definition that touches on properties that are part of the national register would fall under our definition of historic resource of statewide significance, so we already have a definition that kind of touches on that. So I don't know that there's any changes needed to be made there. The tribe requested information about enforcement and penalties. It appears from their view that they feel like there is no enforcement mechanism. I want to emphasize that there is enforcement, but it's only to those properties that are voluntarily in the program, that we've adopted on our list. And so, once we do that, then anytime they make a change or, you know, propose something different, they have to abide by the ordinance. If they don't, that's who we would, where penalties and enforcement would come into play. Otherwise, across the board, the city is, has to abide by state law when it comes to things like cultural resources and archaeology, all of that. They asked about permit reviews, staff does review permits when we get them, building permits, line use permits to determine if there's some kind of implication for historic preservation, and that would continue to happen. And they asked about the opportunity to provide comment, and the way that it's written, the tribes have the same opportunity as everybody else to provide comment, which it follows our conditional use permit ordinance. There's a 20-day notice, and that goes out, and then, you know, you have the opportunity to comment. And then, at the very end, they fault the city for failing to engage the tribe in a meaningful way and request that we add a provision that would require we consult with the tribe in advance. That again is not a requirement for the CLG program. It could, you know, it could be helpful, and so if planning commission thought that was something we should recommend to council, we would maybe craft a provision that was very narrow, you know, very well-defined and narrowly focused. But so overall, planning commission should certainly discuss all of those comments and... But having said all of that, the ordinance can be recommended for approval as proposed or, you know, with consideration of Koozey's comments. And if you make any changes, we'll just want to make sure we spell those out very clearly and justify.
Are we supposed to discuss that now?
Yes, sir, we don't have any further public comment. The tribe submitted their written comment on the record here in writing, and you guys have that, it was given to you last week, and you should have time to review it, so.
Well, my opinion on Exhibit 1, Section 1, given the tribe a seat, I'm against any preferential treatment. As soon as we start giving one person preferential treatment, where do you stop? If we give it to the consolidated, then we got to give a seat to the Ku Klux Klan, then we got to give a seat to the black community, the Mexican community, the Chinese, the Irish white, all the different people are going to come in for that same thing. I'm totally against any preferential treatment. If they want to have a part of the decision, they need to come in, fill out an application, get on the commission, get on the historic commission, and get in there just like everybody else. And that's, so I would be against giving them preferential treatment. I don't think that the concern should be getting along better with either tribe, any tribe or any of that. I mean, we're fair in everything we do, they can come into a meeting, they can talk, they can give us their point of view, we listen to it. We don't show preferential treatment to anybody here, as far as I'm concerned, we don't. And on the areas where they, on the number two, the qualification job, just, I think, just leave it the way it is. Same way on almost every one of these, I don't see why we have to deal with it. It seems to be dealt with just the way it is. The last one, the tribe, in a meaningful way, they recommend addition of a provision that requires consultation. I think that's what, that's what the people over in Simpson Heights want whenever we deal with something down there. I don't know if we have a sign-up, that we send notifications to Simpson Heights people whenever we're dealing with that down there, well then, it'd be the same thing we would do here, just put their name on the thing, they can go into the city webpage, they can follow, they can come to the meetings and find out what's going on. They can be a part of it, just like anybody else in the city that wants to be a part of it. And so, I'm against any preferential treatment.
So, for the vast comment that they had, where they wanted to have advanced consultation, is it, is it as simple as just sending them like a area map and saying, you know, we're, this is the area we're looking at? Because I know like a lot of times the tribes have properties or areas that are significant to them, and I know at the federal level, we have to do a consultation with tribes for that reason. And it might be, it might be, you know, a visual significance to the tribe, something like that, that wouldn't necessarily be obvious, you know, it's not a burial site, it's not, they didn't have a community there or something like that. And so I guess, I'm with, I mean, I, you know, all the other comments, I don't think they need preferential treatment. I'm with, leaning on that, but the last one, I guess I can see where they're asking for that, and I understand why. And, I mean, is it something that could be that simple, where you just send them a letter with the area of, of, that you're looking at?
Yeah, so, do we, do we do that for the general public anyway? So that's a, you know, for the general public, we don't, I mean, we do it based on our requirements in code for notice. We put out 20 days' notice, you have access to the application, you can ask questions, get materials for review. And, and I, I reach out to outside agencies, so the tribes and people like ODAD or utility companies. I generally try to reach out to those agencies in advance of the 20-day notice requirement so I can start getting their feedback. Of course, it doesn't always work out timing-wise based on when an application comes in, but I already do that, it's just not codified in the code. So...
Okay.
Asking to set kind of a process for what that looks like, and then if we were going to do that, we would want to set a timeline for when they would get comments back to us. But it could be as simple as, we got an application for historic preservation changes, here it is, what do you think?
Kind of going off what Kate's saying is, the average citizen, normal citizen of North Bend is going to have that information, the description of the property, picture of the property, everybody's going to have the same information, so I don't understand why the tribe would have to get more information. All they have to do is go through their records and say, oh, okay, this, so this property is, might be some burial grounds or something like that, I mean, it's no different than any other citizen in town. They wouldn't have to have extra information, I don't feel. And we, and we have given them preferential treatment because we allowed this meeting to take place again after they had a chance to look at it previously, so, on the June 21st meeting, so.
I think there is a difference because they are a government. I think that sets a different standard because they are a government. Now, having said that, I think that it would behoove the city of North Bend to get along with all governments. I am not in favor of going way above and beyond, but I don't see where it would hurt to give them a little advanced notice, particularly on the last point. Up on the first point, Exhibit 1, Section 1, they're requesting a seat on the commission, as I understand, to make sure that their interests are addressed. Okay, well, over here in our packet on page 32, it talks about conflict of interest. Impartial hearing body is free from potential conflicts of interest. So I think that, I think that having the tribe on the commission is by definition a conflict of interest because they're looking after their interests, and I understand that. I understand that they're all after their interests, I just don't think it fits in the conflict of interest very well because they would then have to accuse themselves if they had any ex parte communications, if they have any conflict, they'd need to excuse themselves, well that's, that's why they want to be there. So I just, I think that's in conflict, so.
That's interesting, so, the thought then would be, if we set aside a seat specifically for the tribes, we're effectively setting it aside for a representative from the tribal government rather than for a representative of the community that is within the area that we're looking at. So the same person, the same tribal member could apply because they own a business in North Bend, right?
They have to live in North Bend, don't they?
They have to live in North Bend, they don't have, it's not just something...
Some majority have to live in North Bend.
Okay, so, because they have a property interest in North Bend that fits under the statute that I don't know very well, they could apply because of that property interest, and then there wouldn't really, the conflict of interest that Ron's talking about would not exist because they would simply be a member that has this property interest within the confines of North Bend. But, if we set this aside and we create a place for someone who is specifically a member of this other government, then we are, we're kind of bringing in a whole new set of intergovernmental mishmash.
I agree.
That's, I think that's actually a really good point.
Throw that!
What's up, Ron?
And going down to the very last point on their list, I think that the city wants to be a good partner with the tribes, with all the tribes, and all the other governmental agencies. agencies. I don't particularly like the way this was worded. I think it could have been worded more diplomatically. Our staff works hard. We have limited staff, we have limited time. Again, the tribe, the Confederate tribes is looking after their interests, but we need to look after our interests, our staff resources. I'm not opposed to because they are a government entity, giving them a little advanced notice. I think there need to be limits to that.
But if, if we worded it and said that you or whoever in your staff had to write them a letter, notify them somehow 20 days before, so it's the same time period and then that they need to provide comments within X number of days, that also would avoid what just happened last month, whereas they've had their period of time to provide comments, they've been notified. And if they don't, I mean, that's what they do at the federal level, they have one month. If they don't provide comments, it moves forward. And they sometimes come back and say, oh, well, we do have comments. And it's like, well, you had your 30 days and you didn't provide comments. So, you know, it, and it, I mean, I think that that's the one benefit of that is that we can say you have X number of days to provide comments, at which point we will move forward.
Yeah.
And you're already doing it. And I, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be more than 20 days. I don't know.
Yeah. From staff's perspective, just because of timelines on these things, I wouldn't recommend more than 20 days.
Right.
For sure.
My goal is just to get us in compliance with state statute and not, it's nothing against the tribes, it's just we have to address what Salem wants us to do and, and if you can set it up where the tribe is a part of it in the future, that's the goal. But I wouldn't make them a partner in the city's historic landmark commission. The goal is for the city to have a landmark commission, not the city of North Bend and this tribe and this tribe. And that's my goal is just to get us in compliance with the laws.
Ron said it all. Let's get our CLG status.
And Brian, you're on the commission, aren't you?
I, I guess so. I didn't, we haven't met in two years, so I kind of wonder how that works.
Are you willing to be on the commission?
I'm not, that's not my goal.
That is, you know, this, the commission right now is defunct and the ordinance is defunct. And so going through and trying to get it updated and amended, we will likely need council to reappoint, you know, new applications to reappoint members. Okay, well, so planning commission, you have staff's recommendation and then you have, which does include the change to the definition owners, that would make it all property owners. So if you disagree, that's the way council should go. You'd want to point that out. And then you have the tribe's requests for a seat at the commission and for advanced consultation. So those would be the, at least the two things you'd want to make, call out in your motion, how you want to recommend this to council.
I think that for the sake of simplicity, we should look at the state statute.
Agreed.
And just mirror that, whatever happens to the state law.
Agreed.
And as far as the consultation, I really like Kate's idea that not only are we giving them advanced notice, but we're requiring them to give us feedback in a timely manner.
What, what would be the preferred, how many days to give comments back?
I, I would say within 14. That would give enough time to build comments into a staff report.
Would you be making an effort to address both tribes or just?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
All of the above.
And what about any other groups in North Bend? Would it just be limited to?
Well, so the tribes are the only ones who have provided any comment or interest on the topic. But apart from them specifically, notice would go out to all interested affected parties as per our ordinance. So if, it's kind of on par with the utilities like you were talking about earlier because you would let the tribes know because they could potentially have archaeological areas of interest or whatever within the space. And you would let the electric company know because they probably got mines running through parts of this or whatever. So it's that would probably be the most comparable. So we don't have any other governmental entities. If it was the highway, ODOT.
Do you currently require comments back from the electrical companies or whatever, utilities?
I.
I mean, should that be a part of this where it's like you have to notify all?
So the way it's set up right now, I just have the leeway to give them a date of which your comments are due.
Okay.
I just, you know, in that way, it behooves them to get their comments to me in that time so they can be addressed. Doesn't stop them from being late.
But isn't that, I mean, that's already covered by statute as far as archaeological, archaeological sites. So I did, that's why I'm just confused why we're, I mean, I don't have a problem doing it. It just seems like it's already addressed in state statute that they have to be provided notice for historic preservation of grave sites and significant things. So I don't, I just confused why we're doing extra, you know, I have a problem with that, it just seems weird.
Yeah, so we're always going to be subject to that state law that says if there's a known, you know, site, cultural resource, archaeological site, that we need to work with the tribes, coordinate with them. If we run into something that's unknown, we need to stop and coordinate with them. But when it comes to the local landmark register, this would just give them the opportunity to give, if somebody wanted to include a property, they would get advanced notice of that and get good feedback. And maybe they have feedback on that, that's not necessarily something that we know about already under state law. I don't, it would just, it, it gives them the opportunity for comment.
I think that good, it could go a ways toward relations between the tribe and the city. Doesn't mean it will, but it could go.
I didn't realize there was a bad relation between them.
I.
I think that council on its list of goals that it created at the beginning of this year, I think that working on improvement with tribal relations might be on that list. It's been discussed.
I believe so. There, actually, there was another question I had on the list. Excuse me while I look at all of my notes. There was something about archaeological sites not being identified.
That's, it's because, are you wanting to remind?
If they want to keep it secret so it doesn't get disturbed, correct?
Yeah, well, they get, they had people actively go in and raid or destroy sites before they got out. So that's, so under like public records law, for example, one of the exemptions under public records laws, if somebody wants a map that has archaeological sites that are special to tribes identified, that they don't get that. It's exempt.
So that's not just a local.
No, everywhere.
Okay.
I mean, it's state law in Oregon, but it's also state law in Georgia. So I assume it's probably state law in spaces listed.
Anybody have a motion? Or is, I mean, has everybody had an opportunity? I think everybody's had an opportunity to kind of.
So are we in agreement that we would mirror the state statutes and regulations?
To the, all, 100%?
Yes.
But that's how it's written in the, currently?
Correct, that's how it's in the proposal.
To 100% approval.
Yeah.
Yes.
I like that.
So I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve this proposal and adopt the changes included, based on the findings, conclusions and recommendations as presented, with the added requirement for the city to notify all tribes 20 days prior to any hearing and give 14 days for comments to be returned to the city.
For a second.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Other business? Is there any other business?
Yeah, I have a couple of things that I just want to update planning commission on. If you haven't already heard, the city was awarded a preserving Oregon grant to develop a heritage management plan for our Ferry Road Park. And that includes the work to conduct surveys, to prepare our context of archaeological sites and to document archaeological resources at risk. And so we were awarded $20,000 in grant. Will match, the city will match up with $20,000. That'll pay for a firm to come out here and do the archaeological work on site to determine where, you know, what is an area of concern out there, where, where are cultural resources or archaeological sites if they exist out there and help the city better to find those areas so that moving forward with the park management and redevelopment, et cetera, that happens, we know where we can work without the need to notify the tribes or where we need to stay away from or where we need to go to Shippoe and get a permit. So that's good news. And that project is being funded in part by the matching grant from the State Historic Preservation Office, Oregon Heritage and Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. Also, the city is beginning the work to update the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We are working with an Oregon Summer Fellow through PSU. They are doing the background work necessary to get that document updated. And we think that there will be a community survey ready to be disseminated within the next couple of weeks that will solicit and input from public and park facility users as to how they feel about the parks, what they want to see in the parks, et cetera. So be on the lookout for that. And then a reminder that planning commission has a joint planning commission, city council work session next Monday at 4:30 to finish part two of our. And that is all I have.
What's the date on that?
July 26th at 4:30. That's Chelsea.
Chelsea?
No.
Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
After the motion was made, I didn't, I didn't vote. After the motion was made, there wasn't a discussion on the motion. And it sounded to me like, if I'm hearing it correctly, that she wrote that we are approving that last one, that we're going to give them the notification. Was that what it was?
20 days prior, which is what Chelsea already does.
That, this, this one here? That we would be sending them notice?
Correct.
But it's not the same verbiage that she's, there's some qualifications, I think, that Kate added that are not exactly what you have there, right? Because you added a 14 day term.
This was all the stuff from the tribe that she.
So it, so the way that Kate proposed it was we would give the tribe 20 days notice and they would have to give us any comment back within 14 days. And that is what we do for the general public, it's 20 days notice. And we're just setting a, we're setting a standard by which, yes, we're going to notify the tribe, so it's not ever forgotten and specifically, and then the tribes are going to be required to respond within a certain time period.
Okay, so it's going to go to both tribes?
Correct.
Coquell and consolidated?
Yes.
Okay.
That, yes, that would be the intent.
Okay.
And I will do better, give you an opportunity of doing discussion next time. Sorry.
Can't believe I missed that.
Okay. The, there's something in your.
Other comments?
Yeah, what was the second thing you covered?
Oh, so the parks master plan update?
Yeah, so the, so, so the city got money to do a historic inventory.
Heritage management plan for Ferry Road Park.
So wouldn't they, I mean, they're going to, so they would, you would normally consult the tribe anyways, but what, would they, they'd have the option of not telling you anything as far as what's there? Or they could say, we think there's gold, not gold mine, sorry, wrong word. There used to be a, a large gathering place that we know was active and there's a potential to have historic artifacts there. But that's their option to tell you that, correct?
Right, but the city is now going to hire an archaeologist, a firm, to go out there and actually do the work to determine what is there and what isn't.
So they're going to start digging holes around Ferry Road?
This is part of that project.
Like tear up the.
Requirement to do.
And the city pays for the, the archaeological work, research?
We, we're getting grant for it. Yeah, we have a grant, $20,000 in grant money and we will match that. So a total of $40,000.
They just start doing a plot and then digging down and seeing what they find?
Correct.
Unless the tribe objects to say, you can't dig here or?
Well, I think we'll be working in consultation with the tribes and then archaeologists, archaeological firm will be working. Part of the beauty of it being the firm and not just the city trying to map this out is that they have people on staff who specialize in communicating with the tribes and being respectful of their interests, some of which probably we don't really know anything about. So that's a kind of, I think probably one of the reasons that they're encouraging having towns do this is to get the experts in.
So this firm's going to come in and do this work and then if they find something, they'll consult with the tribe?
Everything. The tribe's in, right?
Okay.
Thanks, Dean.
And then we'll come up with a plan for how to manage. Well, presumably, once that's done, we have a lot fewer risks in that area running into something that'll hold everything up.
And move forward and be free.
So Chelsea, going back to the PSU fellow doing the Parks Master Plan update, what all does that consist of?
So there's some assessment of the current plan, what's been done, what hasn't been done. There's a look at demographics and kind of current trends, like to research, to update our information about our current population and their needs. We need to go around and inventory our parks and see what's there and then survey the community and see what it is, you know, what it is they want to see in parks in the future. And once we get all of this information, we then, you know, build it into a new updated plan and that would then come before planning commission for review and recommendation for adoption by council. And so it'll be, it's not a quick process, but we are in the early stages of getting it off the ground and running and gathering information.
And that's not just a summer project then?
The Oregon Summer Fellow is only a 10 week term. This individual is only good for 10 weeks. So we get as much as we can done this summer and then see where we're at, if we can continue it. Staff can continue it through the winter, that's something. If we, we have the opportunity to get another fellow next summer, is another option.
So do we have a fellow?
We do. His name is Calvin Hoff.
And is that a paid fellowship?
It is a paid fellowship, yes.
And we're paying for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments, question?
Oh, does anyone have any public or commission comment? Anybody? Yes, we're adjourned.